You're watching GCTV. Community Access Table Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health. Providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank. Visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College. Providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family. The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services. Cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank. Located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield. Replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122 or visit them online at solastoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
It is Wednesday, July 10th. It is 6:36 PM and we are at the John Zahn Community Center in Greenfield, Massachusetts, at 35 Pleasant Street. This is a regular meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Hollins.
Present.
Mayor Martin. Member Ward. Member Johnson. Chair Nunes.
Here.
And Member Ekstrom. We have a quorum.
And we have Member Karen.
Via phone.
Via phone. Alright. Perfect. You know, maybe I will pass this to you. Do you mind? Something with that? You don't need these box. If you want to, I just thought it might be helpful. Okay. Okay, so we have two sets of draft minutes in our packet today. One from 5:29-19 and one from 6:12-19. Can we have a motion to approve the 5:29-19 minutes?
A motion.
Okay, that's second by Member Hollins. Or Member Ward. I think it was at the same time. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. That's unanimous, thank you. And is there a motion to approve the 6:12-19 minutes? Okay. It was moved by Member Ekstrom, right?
Yep.
And seconded by Mayor Martin. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that is unanimous.
I'm pretty sure it's you.
Okay, great. We didn't have any subcommittee minutes come forward, so we won't be starting with the new process of reviewing the subcommittee minutes at the full committee meeting. So that's why there's not any here for us. Are there any members of the public that are here to comment? Okay. Seeing none, we will move forward. As you can see, today's agenda is very policy-focused. We've been working on policy a lot at the subcommittee level and some of this has come to the full committee. And then we've had to table a handful of times due to time and other considerations. So here we are today, getting caught up. I have us scheduled until 9:45. I'm hoping that we can maybe get out of here a little bit earlier. Aside from that, I will be emailing you in the next day or two to schedule special meetings to review the budget. And so please look out for an email from me regarding that. And it's my understanding that the budget documents end up in the packet, so I'll definitely follow up on that and make sure that they get to us via email. Aside from that, that's all I have for you today. The, yes?
Question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Budget current, school year 2020, budget 2019. Emails.
It may actually include both. Yeah. The superintendent is not here today, so there's no superintendent report. And I'm not sure that we actually have any subcommittee reports. But that's where we're at. Any subcommittee reports? Don't think so. Katie? Katie, did you want to comment on our policy subcommittee discussion? Or do you want to wait? We actually are not.
We did not meet because of illness last month. We will be meeting when I get back. But we are looking into and working on the situation and legislation coming forward on lead in the water, but otherwise.
Thank you. And just to clarify, Member Karen is commenting on the Health, Safety and Facilities Subcommittee. And the Policy Subcommittee did meet. We reviewed Section C. Katie, did you want to report out on that?
I'm sorry, I barely could hear you, Ellen.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. No wonder it needs to be by me. Can you hear me better now?
So much better, thank you.
Okay. Did you want to report out on the Policy Subcommittee, just real quickly?
Sure. We've been doing really great work, really looking into all of the policies and how it relates to current MSC policies as well as other states, other towns, I should say. And it's really moving forward really well. I'm looking forward to doing some first and second readings tonight so we can keep this process moving forward and get a well-rounded, fully thought-out policy manual so we are ready to go into the next school year and beyond.
Thanks, Katie. Are there any questions for Member Karen before we go? Okay. School Committee Representatives. Did the Collaborative for Educational Services meet?
Yes, they did. I was unable to attend.
Okay. And Member Hollins, Planning and Construction.
They did not meet.
Thank you. Okay, great. Are there any questions or comments thus far? Nope? Okay. So let's jump right into our business. I think we're already ahead of schedule, everyone. We have today the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. They're here to report to us, to give us a general report. There's a two-page document in your packet. It looks like this, with some highlights from the CPAC. So please come on up and just be sure to turn your mic on. Awesome.
Hello, good evening.
Will you be sure to engage the mic? Awesome, thank you.
Yes.
And then if you could also just state your names for the record? And then, yeah, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Matt Holloway. I'm the District Director of People's Services.
I'm Crystal Zimmer and I am the Secretary of the CPAC.
I'm Mary Traver. I'm a co-chair of the CPAC.
And I'm Jody Falk, the other co-chair of the CPAC.
So I won't take too much time. We have some very accomplished parents here who are going to share their accomplishments and goals for next year. Just want to make, I guess, three quick comments. First of all, my job in special education is so tied up in relationships with parents and in making sure that families are an essential part of the planning for kids with disabilities. So coming into a district, the CPAC for me was one of the most important relationships that I had to establish right away. And I've been very lucky to work with these three and all of the parents who are on the CPAC. It's a really great group. For those, a quick refresher. So Mass General Law establishes CPACs as an advisory council to the school committee. Says, this is MGL Chapter 71. So the school committee of any town or school district shall establish a parent advisory council on special education. So Special Education Parent Advisory Council, for those of you who are wondering about the acronym, that's SPAC. Membership shall be offered to all parents of children with disabilities and other interested parties. Duties include, but are not limited to advising the committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities, meeting regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development and evaluation of the school committee's special education programs. And then the council itself, committee itself, has a number of responsibilities that they have to fulfill. And I just want to say one last note, which is that, you know, special education is a very unique system in how much, it's not just a matter of kind of having good relationships with families. Families in special education are actually empowered to really be at the heart of the law. And we can't do anything as a district without working closely with the families of each and every student who has a disability in our district. There's about 340 of them district-wide. And so, you know, for us, it's just really important structurally to have good relationships with these families. And the CPAC gives us a formal structure to maintain those relationships. And it's just been a real pleasure and joy to work with you all this year and very excited about the summer and great things to come. So I will pass the mic now to Jody Falk, who is the President of the CPAC. I'm sorry, Co-President.
Co-chair, President. I just want to say thank you for having us here tonight. And we were here in September and it's nice to have this kind of framework of, or bookends of what we hope to do and now to tell you what we have accomplished over the year. Also wanted to say thank you to Matthew because we did have a great year together and really a positive working relationship, so thank you for that. And I will hand you to the other co-chair.
Hi, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about what we've done this year. We have had a very successful and fruitful year. We created what we believe to be our very first bylaws. We joined as a charter member of the statewide Mass PAC. We had a very successful vision meeting a year ago this month. We have developed a CPAC lending library where books specific to children with disabilities will be available to staff and parents throughout the district. In each child's IEP is a CPAC flyer so that the parents know that we exist and we are here for them, as well as a flyer from the Executive Office of Health and Human Services that lists a number of the different departments and agencies statewide that parents can connect with to get more services for their children. We assisted with the Parents' Rights Training. Twice we have attended the Federation for Children with Special Needs Voices of Community Conference, once in person and once via live internet feed. We've had a number of speakers that I'll mention later that we have invited all of Franklin County to and have had some people attend. We had an outreach event at Lyden Woods and one at Oak Courts. We had our flyers translated into Moldovan and Spanish. We are having a display next month in the Greenfield Public Library. We have beefed up the CPAC website. We now have free childcare during our meetings, which has been incredibly helpful. We, here at one of these meetings, raised awareness of the need for cameras on the buses that the kids with special needs use. We, as Jody mentioned, we presented to the school committee last September. We have identified building liaisons, a CPAC parent attached to each school building in this district, and introduced them via school letters to the parents of that school. We are having a family picnic and pool party on Saturday. We have a new Facebook page. And we have had a number of wonderful speakers and trainings. We had Ingrid Florrie from the Department of Developmental Services come out and teach us about the family services, the family support services. We had Sue Crosby from Mass Families Organizing for Change. We had two representatives from the United ARC. We had two representatives from UCP of Western Mass. We had a representative from Family Ties. We had a very wonderful presentation on fostering friendships with and between our kids with special needs by Carrie Younger and Christina Doe. A lovely lady named Leslie Leslie, yes, that's her name, from the statewide Mass PAC came out and gave us a training. We had a presentation from the Family Empowerment Division of Pathlight. And probably most exciting, we had a training by a law enforcement officer from North Hampton from the Autism Law Enforcement Education Coalition to help us understand better how to protect our kids and how to introduce them to first responders and things they should and should not do and things they shouldn't should not say. And that's our list of accomplishments. I'm going to pass this over to Crystal and she's going to tell you a little bit about what we hope to do in the next few months.
Hey. I just want to comment really quick. The UCP, I thought the UCP speaker was really cool because they talked about how to get assistive devices for our students and for our kids. When we may feel like they might not be funded somewhere, we might be able to get them through the Cerebral Palsy, United Cerebral Palsy Organization. So I just, that was one of my favorite speakers of the year. But, so some goals that we're looking at for this upcoming year, so we're super excited. So one of the things is we would like to facilitate discussion and kind of review some of the evacuation and safety plans for the schools and how they impact our children, specifically with special needs. We are looking to hopefully host like a family fun night, like a family film night to have like a movie and so it doesn't have to be all business. And it can also raise awareness and get our name out there for people so that they know we're here. We're looking to hopefully do some fundraising so that we can do events like that, so we can do some fun nights, but also be able to maybe even fund other speakers that may not be free speakers to be able to come in and that kind of thing. We're looking to possibly do an event for kind of honoring some people who have been especially helpful in special ed over the year, maybe people from the community, things like that. So kind of an honorary sort of event at some point. So that would be really cool to kind of interact with the community a little bit in that. We would like to try to work on different ways to improve connections with staff from the schools. So having staff work with us as parents in what's really helpful for our kids and what kind of resources we can connect them with as well. Different professional developments, having them come to our meetings would be really cool. So trying to improve some of those connections. Further promotion and building of the liaison program. So this year we were able to assign a parent to each school who will be sort of a person to go between the CPAC and the school. And we were introduced to the principals, but now we really want to like improve our presence in the school so that parents know that we're there for, as a resource for them if they need anything. So April Vacation, we're going to be putting on a provider fair, which will hopefully have 40 or more services and resources from the community where parents can come and they can look and they can see all the different things that they could have for their child, you know, if they're eligible and that kind of thing. So sometimes as a parent, you don't know where to go for help. And so allowing them to have a provider fair and something that's family-friendly for them to come to is really, really important. We are looking at trying to make meetings and events more accessible through technology and also with outreach. So she mentioned that we had done some outreach at Lyden Woods, looking at Oak Courts, looking at some of the other places in Greenfield that may have a difficult time getting to our meetings, but also using technology, maybe Facebook Live or something like that at our meetings so that people can access the really awesome speakers that we have who may not be able to actually get to our meetings. And so, and having that also maybe on Facebook Live. Chill. Okay. So, stop. Shh. Okay. But like that would also be something that's, that people are able to go back to as well to look as a resource for something that they might need. And then finally, one of the things that we're looking at is continuing growth engagement in both the school community and the wider community and letting people know that, you know, the CPAC isn't just someplace that you go where if you have a problem, you go there. It's just a really great resource for your kids and you can come to any of the meetings. We have childcare, you know, things like that. And really, you know, putting our purpose out there. And yeah, so.
Any questions?
That's what we're trying to do.
Member Hollins?
How? My understanding of CPAC is that unlike the PTO or the PTA, which is a voluntary group of really helpful parents, this is statutorily required advice, advisory committee to the school committee. So when we list, you know, these are our subcommittees and task forces, we're actually audited on whether we have this committee and the law says they are required as an advisory committee to our school committees. Maybe they should be listed. But what I wanted to ask was what could this, what could the school committee do to help you, if anything? Do, as you have your meetings, do you think it would really help if something? Because you are an integral part of the school system by statute, so.
Well, any one of you is welcome to attend any one of our meetings. And actually, there's some very interesting legislation before the state that would make it so that a member of each CPAC in every community would be a non-voting member of the school committee of the same community, which would, we would have a lot more communication back and forth that way. It would be a wonderful thing. I'm sure we'll think of lots of things and we can get back to you on that.
Yeah. I think, you know, I think that we have at least, you know, in the last half a year or so, been a lot more vocal with the school committee in general. And I think that thus far, there's been a lot of, you know, response and feedback from that, which is really, I think, promising. Yeah, like it's very helpful when we get feedback that, hey, you know, yeah, we do need cameras on those buses. It is really important. And to be able to kind of raise awareness on that kind of thing. So I think we have been semi-advisory a little bit. I think we could definitely open up a lot more communication to be that way. Yeah. But I think if you guys, you know, if you want to come to our meetings, that would be...
We would love that.
Yeah. So.
Mayor Martin?
Thank you for the presentation tonight. One question. Do you have access to, how do you get access to the, say, the educators and administrators? Is it all through Matt or is it through the superintendent? Or you just go direct to the schools?
All of the above.
All of the above.
We have, like with the liaison program, for example, I know that, was it you or Jody? One of you had emailed specifically the principals to let them know, by the way, this is your liaison. Yeah, so Jody had emailed all the principals and said, this is the liaison of your school, this is what they're going to be doing, you know, refer parents who have questions about resources, refer them to this particular parent who is a liaison from the CPAC. You know, so we do that, but then we also come to the school committee. Am I just loud? So we just also come to the school committee and voice stuff as well. And we go through Matt a lot.
We have been working very closely with Matt and he's been very supportive.
Yeah.
You mentioned earlier that you want CPAC to be more than just a place where people come to complain or with their, with their problems. I don't recall ever receiving any complaints or problems brought to the school committee from your group. So there are no complaints or criticisms or...
I think some of our goals for this next year are to definitely be sure to come up with complaints for you guys. I'm totally joking.
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay, Mayor, are you soliciting complaints?
But one of the concerns that we did have was about cameras on the buses and we did bring that to you guys. And then also, you know, the paraprofessional pay, but also the amount of paraprofessionals and cutting from the budget and that kind of thing. That was a concern that we had brought as well during the budget deliberation. So I think that we have been vocal when we need to be. But I think that, you know, in the future, we may have some, but communication is really important, so.
So everything's fine?
So, if you'd like, I could talk, but I think we'll keep this about this for now.
You also mentioned UCP. Representative Paul Mark introduced UCP to Greenfield. They're interested in moving to Greenfield.
Yes.
And we've had some meetings and I think, excuse me, we're meeting next week to see if we can find a location for them. So you expect to be part of their portfolio?
Yeah, well, I mean, all of these speakers that we have are all resources that we can direct people to. If somebody's having an issue with getting assistive devices or something like that, we have a resource that we can direct them to. We're not necessarily, we don't really partner with people, but we are an access point for people who need resources, so.
We are very excited about having UCP bring their services to Franklin County.
Very excited.
And I just want to add, one function that the CPAC plays, which is really valuable to us, is educating the educators. So a lot of times, UCP, a lot of, a lot of other agencies that can provide services for students, like for example, the idea of sending home Department of Mental Health information with the IEPs for eligible students. I mean, that came directly out of some of our staff attending a CPAC meeting where we heard about these available resources. So I think that's been a real, a real priority for us is making sure that all of our special educators and related service staff are building their awareness of what's out there for, for families because, you know, there is, there's a lot of resources in this state.
Member Ekstrom?
I actually just wanted to echo what Crystal had said about it being in place for parents. Being a parent to a special needs kid is particularly isolating. And even when you don't think it will be or that it is, it absolutely is. And going to a meeting and hearing other people say, yeah, my kid does that too, or mine does too, or asking questions, how do I get this insurance? How do I get that done? Every meeting that I've gone to, one of the other parents is handing me a card saying, no, you got to call this person, you got to do this, you got to do that. And it's, it's good to be around your people. And so any parents out there who haven't been attending, thinking it's because you don't feel like you've been having issues or whatever it is, just go and be around some people who get what your life looks like. Great job, ladies.
Thank you.
And I think, just really quickly, I think that one of the things you're talking about, being a parent of a special ed student is being very isolating. And I think that's one of the reasons why we were trying to, you know, translate a lot of our stuff into different languages because it's not only isolating being a parent of a special ed student, but it's even more isolating when you don't have access to transportation to get to somewhere where you don't know if you're going to... We had a translator, Matt could as a translator, at the CPAC meeting because we had a parent who was going to be speaking Spanish. And, and they translated one of our speakers so that they could have access to that. So, so it can be very isolating being a special ed parent, but it can also be very isolating being a special ed parent from a population that isn't really well represented in a lot of different places, so, yeah.
So we see Member Hollins hand up. Are there any other members that would like to speak before Member Hollins speaks again?
Okay. I have a couple comments. Thank you so much for coming and I really love looking at this list here. There's just so much that you're doing and it's wonderful to see. And I'm very excited about the momentum, you know, so thank you. I know that this takes a lot of effort and it's really nice to see this here and to have you in. And we had talked about sort of two kind of formal reports. And we had talked about sort of two kind of formal reports like this annually. The next one would be just prior to when we begin deep deliberation on the FY21 budget. And I think that that structure seems to be a pretty cool setup for now. It seems like it's okay. I also want to say that I really appreciate you all coming in and utilizing the public comment period to also, although a little bit more informally, still giving us your input on the record. So thank you so much for doing that. And also, I just think the resource, the provider fair is an amazing idea. So I'm very much looking forward to that and I see that it'll be in April and I will no longer be sitting at this table, but I will be looking out for info on it. And I highly encourage engaging with the school committee prior to that to ensure that the message gets out about the provider fair.
I'll yield to Member Hollins.
I just wanted to follow up with what a couple of you had mentioned and Matt Holloway had mentioned about your speakers. I went to two or three year meetings and heard speakers and not only was it terrific, but I was amazed at some of the services that wouldn't cost our school district anything that are out there for parents. Student counseling, summer camp, equipment at home, you know, food, Brent, it was incredible. And I'm wondering if there's any way we could help or it's possible to tape the presentations so that they're, because the person comes and gives this wonderful speech with all these resources, then they leave, maybe there were 10 people that hear it. But what I was thinking about the whole time is this would be fabulous to have a library that our special ed staff could access if Matt were to say, wow, you should really listen to this and know that you can refer parents here. So I love your idea of using technology that people might be able to phone in for your meetings or whatever. And I don't know if it's possible to record these presentations, because really, I, I was learning about resources I didn't know existed and I was surprised how much is there.
Yeah.
And thank you for all you do.
So one of the things, so I'm a virtual high school teacher and so I teach through a virtual platform, through Blackboard, so I have a classroom and, you know, you can, you have camera, you have video, mic, and you have all that fancy stuff. And so there are programs out there where you can videotape something, you can record it, other people can join in live with it, and then you can view the recording later as well. One of the things that I know that we are, that we're still, one of the hurdles that we have to figure out is privacy as well of the people at the meeting and whether or not people want their face, voice, or whatever out there. So there's some things that we have to kind of figure out waiver type stuff, you know, that, that kind of stuff that we have to consider in that. And then also wifi, that we have good wifi access to be able to do that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of stuff that goes around, bringing technology in and, and recording that kind of stuff. But yeah, no, I mean, even just having it be recorded, some of the more paid speakers may have rules around that, so we have to look at the speakers as well. So there's a lot of considerations around the technology piece that we're going to have to be looking at, so, yeah.
Yeah, as an extension of that, it's, it'll be necessary to review the open meeting law and see what we'll have to follow. I love the idea of you all really kind of like being on the leading edge of utilizing technology and even, you know, Facebook Live, all this stuff. I love that idea. So a lot of support coming from me and everybody else here. Any final closing questions or comments, everybody? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
You're very welcome. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a follow-up regarding the attorney review process. We will hear from Member Johnson. He has been reviewing best practice for attorney review. So Member Johnson, if you want to take over, floor is all yours.
Sure. Our current attorney, school attorney policy BDG refers to, says legal services will be reviewed when the annual budget is reviewed. It doesn't say who will review it or how they will be reviewed. And I see that in our new, the proposed language is coming out now, this language is not actually included, but it does seem wise for us as a, as a committee to have a practice of reviewing legal services. So I've started to explore the landscape and I can let you know how far I've gotten so far. I've discussed with MASC whether there is an existing kind of like template for legal service review and there isn't. And some of the kind of questions I'm, I'm learning we need to kind of explore are essentially like who is involved in the review and how is the review conducted? Is it conducted openly or is it done in closed session? Wanting to make sure there's a way for any stakeholder who accesses legal services to participate in the review practice. Some of the basic questions that I put out to Liz LaFond at MASC that I had kind of drafted were essentially first identifying whether the legal services we currently have are ones that we want to continue with. So questions like, do you want to continue with the existing legal services that we have, why or why not? And kind of gathering some information that way. And then if a, if a decision is made to continue with legal, the legal services that we have, asking the questions essentially, what is going well with the legal services and how can they be improved so that the attorneys can get effective feedback from us in order to continually improve their services to us and to the superintendent and anyone else who accesses the attorney? So next steps are kind of continuing to explore a little bit more, because I had been kind of assuming that this was a process that would be run by the school committee in open sessions, similar to the way that we evaluate the superintendent. But I'm learning that it may actually be a different process, so that, those are the next questions to explore.
Thanks, Member Johnson. Are there any questions for Member Johnson? I see Member Hollins.
I don't have a question necessarily, but when this came up, what occurred to me was, you know, reviewing services, first, there's an historic interest in timeliness of response. You know, you ask a question, do you get the answer? A month later, you have to keep calling and making reminders or do you automatically, do you get prompt feedback? That was a, an issue when this went into the policy, so I think timeliness is one. And the other, what went through my mind is when did we need, what type of items did we contact the attorney about? And was the person receiving the response feeling satisfied with the response? Because the policy allows us to use different attorneys, not just one for school committee and one for something else, but if you had a really unique case, let's say about immigration, you might want to get somebody who's a specialist in immigration law. So it seemed like part of it was where did we ask for attorney services? Did we think the attorney gave good, was knowledgeable about that topic? So it would be related to what we request. And then it would help us know where there are some specializations where maybe we need a specialist, you know what I mean? So what we actually.
Thanks, Member Hollins. I see Member Ekstrom.
This is unrelated, just so that we're clear about what Adrienne and I are doing. Katie's having a hard time hearing everyone, so we're passing the phone around and that's why I'm texting and all those things. Anyway, just wanted to share.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions or comments for Member Johnson? Member Hollins?
I thought of one other thing. The other thing I thought about is I can remember talking to other school committees about how they use attorney services and some of them have, this has to do with expense. Some school committees have a flat rate for the year, some pay by the hour, but additional information when we review school attorney services might be the models and relative costs.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Yes, Mayor Martin?
Was that policy BDG? It was, so are we going to be discussing that this evening?
We will have Policy Section B up for first reading tonight. Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Member Johnson, for taking on that work and we will continue the conversation next month.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so now to the bulk of our meeting. I thought it would be 8:00 PM, but it's only 7:15. We have two sections for first reading and one section of policy for second reading. I've started with the first reading policies simply because I think that we can maybe move through them at a quicker pace. That may or may not be true, but we'll see. And then we have the second reading for Policy Section A to close the meeting out. In your packet, you'll have the suggested policies and supporting commentary. The format is a little different in, in each bit of the packet. Hopefully, it was easy for you all to read some of these you've seen before in your packet, since we've attempted to address this a couple of times. I am going to yield the floor to Member Karen so that she can walk us through the policies. And my suggestion, unless there's any opposition, which I'm open to, would be for Member Karen to highlight the changes that are being made in the first readings and allow for any discussion on those. If we want to send something back to subcommittee for further consideration, please request that via a motion and we will try to make a clear list of what policies may need additional review at the subcommittee level. And I appreciate your patience with that because I will want to go at a pace where I can definitely make sure that I'm, I'm keeping track of that and also Susan Farber is able to keep track of any suggestions. So, yes, Member Hollins?
I just, if you're going to do Section D first, I just would like to clarify what we're looking at in the packet, like just the first policy DA, we have a complete clean policy, which I assume is the new one, and the entire prior policy is crossed out. So do we understand that everything in the old policy is recommended to be rescinded and everything is new? I'm just trying to understand.
So I'm going to yield to, to Member Karen. Are you there, Member Karen?
I am, I'm trying to understand your question. So I'm just going to do a little bit of training and if I don't answer the question, please stop me. So if you're looking at your packet, the first two pages labeled Section B are our rationale, short-term, you know, little snippet of what we changed. If you go to Policy DA, if you look at the bottom, its source is Greenfield. The next DA source is MASC. We in our Policy Subcommittee meeting decided to keep Greenfield's DA because it was extremely close to DA or I can't tell you exactly, to MASC when we saw ours with the DA. So in almost every single case, you will see our policy followed by the MASC's suggested policy. And sometimes we kept ours, sometimes we scrapped ours for there completely, and sometimes we just made small changes. Does that answer the question?
That did answer the question, thank you.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to kind of jump right in. It's really hard to do this without getting it with these faces, I'm not going to lie.
If someone raises their hand, hey Katie, if somebody raises their hand, I'll just interrupt. So if somebody wants to make a comment, then we can do it that way. Thank you.
Perfect. So DA, we kept ours. DB, we just made a small change to the first sentence and I'll read the change. The annual budget is a financial expression of the educational program of the school department and it reflects the goals and objectives of the school committee to meet the needs of students. Very small language change, really just emphasizing we do this for the students. We go down to DDC, we just replaced town with city. That's going to happen a lot, we don't need to spend a lot of time talking about that. Just the same, all of the pronouns have been changed from they to them, from he, she to they, them. Next big change, let's see, is DBE and I have a feeling this is going to be our large conversation of the night. So we changed DBE because this is a policy that does not exist in model policy. Revolving funds by their very nature change from year to year and several revolving funds on which the district particularly is subject to, which is school, traffic, or a particular volatile, as the committee knows. Specific dollar amounts or even percentages tied at hands of the administration and committee and prudently managing the finances of the district on a multi-year level. While the original policy may have been presented in the name of fiscal responsibility, best practice allows the administration to advise the committee on a yearly basis, making multi-year forecasts around the best allocation of funds. This was well thought out and talked about at length. I'm certain there's going to be questions, but the main thing is that this was recommended by multiple business managers, that this was not a great policy. It was tied in our hands and making things much more difficult than they needed to be.
A member Karen? A member Karen?
Yes.
I think that we accidentally skipped DBD.
Yes.
Just right before.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
All right, so DBD, we opted for theirs. And again, this goes back to just really clearing our language, that recognizing our responsibility is to the school committee, is to the students in education. We clearly have a job to the taxpayers, locally and state, but our priority is education and that is our job. This is what we're going to be fighting for, is to make sure our students have the strongest education we can give them. So do you want to read all of DBD or does everybody have plenty of time to read it themselves?
I understand it's DBD?
Yes.
And that's budget planning?
Planning, mhm.
Okay, so the, the Greenfield one was completely struck out.
And then the one on the next page?
Is MASC?
Uh huh.
So we skipped, dropped ours and used theirs. Are we reading Southside?
Mayor Martin was reviewing.
So I guess, my only concern is that, and I don't know if we had it in our, the Greenfield policy.
Can you hear him?
No, we cannot.
I don't know if we had it in the Greenfield policy, but the, the MASC policy doesn't, doesn't state when, for instance, the, at some point, the budget process has to, has to, the budget has to been declared the superintendent's budget and not a business manager's draft. So as, as soon as possible, the superintendent's budget should be, should be claimed. So as soon as possible, the superintendent's budget should be claimed. And it shows in the last sentence, the superintendent will have overall responsibility for budget preparation, including the construction of and adherence to a budget calendar. So we have discussed the calendar in the past, actually, I think just a couple of policies before this, which is according to the Charter, and that's fine. But we need to have a declared budget from the superintendent for the Budget Committee to deal with the budget presentation to the School Committee. And whether it's done in Subcommittee or as a whole, it can't be a practice document.
Are you requesting that the policy include a specific date, or are you bringing this up just in general for consideration as an important?
I think a specific date is, would be better applied to the process since we already have specific dates by way of the Charter. So the School Committee has a specific date to present to the mayor 21 days before. The mayor has to present to the City Council. So if we're going to discuss a budget for 60 days, then the superintendent's budget should be declared maybe January 15th, January 10th, and then the School Committee discusses it for the 60 days. The more recent budgets coming from the School Department have been declared 72 hours before advertised as being the superintendent's budget.
Okay, so would you like to put that forward as a suggestion and motion for consideration?
I leave it up to the Subcommittee to, since this is the first reading, to decide what's best in the Subcommittee to lay the dates and the parameters for that.
Okay. So I'm hearing a request to review Policy DBD, that's Dog Boy Dog, and to consider a date set January 10 or 15 is suggested for when the superintendent's draft budget is available. Is there, I believe it is a motion. Mayor Martin, is that your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, great. Is there a second? Okay, and just to clarify, if it's not already clear, just to have the Subcommittee review that, just to take that into consideration and then come back to the full committee.
May I make a friendly amendment? May I make a friendly amendment?
Certainly.
I don't know that it needs to be specifically, this is not the amendment, this is my thought process. I don't know that it would need to be a specific date as opposed to as determined by the deadline for a City Council review and approval or something along those lines because you can't, if you get that specific, you'd have to change it every year. Nobody wants to do that. Do you know what I mean? Does that make sense?
Thank you. Yes.
I think that might not be such a friendly amendment. What I'm looking for is to be specific to the process. So if we're constantly dealing with an almost maybe type of budget, then there really is no budget discussion. So what we need is the budget and then the discussion takes place to add or subtract.
Right. So, because I want to keep the conversation moving, I think that we understand what's at the heart of this, is do we want to define a relatively specific time to have a complete draft budget? And the Subcommittee can take into consideration input from Member Ekstrom and Member Martin, Mayor Martin, and we'll kind of go from there. I see Member Hollins' hand.
I want to support what the mayor is saying. The two years I've been on the Budget Committee, I think one of the tensions on the committee is that the committee is supposed to be reviewing the budget and advising the School Committee doesn't see it until after it's been printed in the paper, and that has been a discussion. I think to say that, you know, by mid-January, otherwise there is no budget Subcommittee or School Committee opportunity to review it. And also, in the last sentence, it is true, a superintendent, whoever it is, has the overall responsibility for a budget draft, a draft budget presentation. It has to be reviewed and supported by a School Committee. So I don't know if it should say for the draft budget preparation, and something in here that mentions that it, the final budget is a decision of the School Committee.
Okay. So there is a motion on the table to consider the timeline part. It seems there is a consensus there to have the Subcommittee review. Is everyone clear on that motion? Yes and no's? Okay, cool. So all those in favor of having Subcommittee review that specific component?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous.
Aye.
Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Katie. So that is unanimous. So we will review that. And then, Member Hollins, I'm hearing two additional suggestions. One is to insert the word "draft" in describing the budget on the last sentence of DBD, to read responsibility for draft budget preparation, and also to consider a sentence that recognizes the School Committee's authority and responsibility to approve the final budget.
Review and vote the final budget.
Okay. So that I will consider to be a motion put forward by Member Hollins. She is saying yes, and I'll go ahead and second that. Any additional conversation on that? It seems pretty straightforward to me. Yes?
Would you clarify the meaning of your copy? What have the overall responsibility for draft? Budget preparation. And maybe a sentence after that that says the School Committee has the responsibility to vote the final budget, something like that.
Thank you. I think the Subcommittee can also wordsmith it a little bit. Any comments or questions related to that? Does that make sense to you, Member Karen?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, cool. Any, or all those in favor?
Aye.
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 So that is unanimous. So we will consider those two items at the Subcommittee level and come back. Let me just make a note here. Okay, great. Member Karen, if you want to continue?
Sure. We were up to the one I actually skipped ahead to, DBE. This was a policy that we had that did not exist in model policy. It talked about exactly how we could or could not spend our revolving funds. We understood the original intent, but it really did tie the hands of the School Committee and in turn the Superintendent and Business Manager. I think that's all I want to say for the moment. I'm going to assume there are questions, and we'll go from there.
Any questions, Mayor Martin?
Is there a replacement policy?
There's.
There is not. Nope. Go ahead, Deidre.
I was just going to say that.
Then I'm wondering if we could have an explanation of the law for each of the revolving funds. So what type of revolving fund is it? What is the law for carryover and expenditure? And what is the historical revenue for that particular revolving fund over the past three years? This seems like a lot of work, and it is, but it's exactly what we did when we rewrote the revolving fund policy. So, and not all of those numbers quickly come back to me. So I would need all of that information to support the total strikeout of this policy.
Member Hollins?
I know this policy has taken a lot of time, and I know it's a unique and different policy than what other districts have. Maybe if we got this policy right, other districts that are having huge financial problems would benefit by it. So in principle, I don't agree that we can never do something that isn't being done. The two major parts of this policy are actually nothing that we've argued about or discussed. It's right at the end. I think it isn't true that this ties anyone's hands. The first important part of this policy, which has been a benefit of all the discussion, is that every year, the School Committee will be advised about these funds. As you can see, we have five new members next year. Most people don't get on the School Committee knowing about revolving funds and what they are and how they're used and how they're saved. So the very first part says, at the end, one of the important components, "As a part of the budget process, the sitting School Committee will be advised of the number of revolving fund accounts in place and get a copy of this policy and a revolving fund budget report." So one of the really important parts of this policy is to make sure that whoever's on this committee every year gets information and education about revolving funds. Otherwise, people really don't know they exist or how they are funded. The second really important part is the next sentence, which says, and I disagree that this ties anyone's hands, which is why I'm bringing up the next sentence, which says that the Superintendent Business Manager can come to the School Committee and make a recommendation about these funds at any time. So basically, this is what you're choosing. With the policy, these funds cannot be depleted unless someone comes to the School Committee and says, "I want to deplete the Choice Revolving Fund, the Athletic Revol-- I want to deplete it." And then we know it's being depleted. And without this policy, the Business Manager and Superintendent can just deplete the funds and not have to advise the School Committee. That's why the policy is important. It's really whether the sitting School Committee should be advised if their revolving funds, which are established mostly for stability, that's what this was trying to accomplish, if they're going to be depleted, should the School Committee know or not? And that gets to the heart of how you do budget. If your appropriation doesn't match your budget, do you deplete all your savings, or do you align it with your expenses? And that's a School Committee decision. So those are the two most important parts of this policy, not the recommendation. It's the listing of them, what they're for. Educate your School Committee every year about what these are because you could have a whole different School Committee every year, and you may not have people know the first thing about them. And secondly, if you're going to deplete them, come to your School Committee first and say, "I want to deplete these funds," and then let the School Committee decide if that's how they want to do it. So I don't agree that this should be let go because then there's back, the reason it was put in by people that spent a year on it and a whole special meeting was to try and make sure Greenfield didn't get in the situation it was in when it almost lost the district. So I think it could be improved, but I don't agree with removing it into.
Thanks, Member Hollins. I see Member Ward.
Am I right that this thing was voted in in November 2017?
It's my understanding that the date listed is accurate.
And it was, it began discussion at the end of 2016. It looks like it was discussed and reviewed almost 10 times in the year 2017, and was voted, and it was accepted in November 2017.
My understanding is that the dates on the sheet are accurate.
So in a year and a half, we've decided that none of this works. Is that what we're saying?
I don't believe that that's what we're saying.
Is that what the Policy Subcommittee is saying? That's not.
So this policy had, did you want to answer, Katie?
Again, I'm having a hard time thoroughly understanding everyone. I understand Member Hollins' point. Those are important things to consider. The way that we all felt while making, actually, the way I felt while making this policy change was that those two things would be accounted for in other places in our policy about how we handle things. I'm okay with considering reopening the policy. The problem that I had with the policy was the way we were so stringent about exactly how much went in each revolving account, blah, blah, blah. That was like very frowned upon by multiple Business Managers, multiple MASC representatives. It really wasn't the way that most districts, if not all districts, because they had never come across a policy like this before, handle things. So I definitely can see the point, but the ones that were like, "We're doing it wrong. In a year and a half, we've decided this is all wrong," it was like, "This doesn't exist anywhere else, so let's rethink this whole process."
Member Ward, does that adequately respond to your question?
It's plausible.
Okay. Do you have any other questions or comments? I see Mayor Martin.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just, I think we should pass the phone each time someone speaks like a talking stick.
Nice.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Yes.
My concern is also involved in the practice of utilizing funds that are dedicated and have a specific use. So when we transfer funds from revolving to the operating and then from operating back to revolving, we've kind of supplemented or supplanted operating funds that are voted in the budget from the City Council and Executive to the School Department. For example, many times, if this current policy was followed, you wouldn't have overruns and circuit breakers so that the Department of Revenue would then automatically take the money from the School Department and give it to the town. We've had that occasion on, it happened twice. If we also had, for instance, when we're talking about utilizing one-year's receipts as a policy and for our School Department, it's not unlike the circuit breaker law, which is, the law says you have to spend the money that you received last year. So it's really compatible with a number of existing laws. The Special Education Revolving Fund, we had, for example, set it up for the max of $250,000, but now I think it's close to $550,000. So we've got to consider that these funds can be set aside and almost banked, if you will, for use in a future year for anything from wages to new programs or a number of other expenditures that will not be approved or presented to the City Council or to the School Committee. So I think control of all of the taxpayers' money by virtue of policies is not only prudent, I think it's particularly needed to exist as a School Department over years that have high-funding years and low-funding years.
I can add--
No, I was just going to say, I would, I have no problem in deferring to the committee, back to the Subcommittee to review this, and I could show up with some other people to explain the process, too.
I completely appreciate the thought we should send it back, and I appreciate the other members' opinions. I do understand quite well the budget process and how it works. I asked multitude of questions. A lot of the policy is law, so there's sense to me that we didn't need to repeat law in our policy manual because it was law, but I can understand that maybe we should. So we can definitely review this. Let's just kick it back to Subcommittee. We will take into account all of these opinions, and we'll come back again.
So I have a couple of comments. So first off, related to timing and when we voted on things and it coming up for consideration again. So this is just, you know, it's one policy in the entire section of Section D, and since we opted to go through a comprehensive review of our, all of our policies, that's why this is coming up again for review. And also, the beauty of, you know, what it is that we do is that we can actually bring things up for consideration. So I don't think that timing-wise, it's necessarily an issue. Also, I understand how the policy is written and that it does seem to suggest some flexibility. The problem is, is that we don't talk about it that way. We don't use it that way, and this causes confusion. And I think that it actually, it's not, it's not in alignment with really what the policy is saying. So this has been problematic all throughout. And if we really stick to this as a firm policy, then that would mean that any time that we are essentially potentially going over under the thresholds that are suggested, we would be also voting to suspend policy, and then we'd have to technically go back and then revote and review. There's a process for when we suspend policy. So that is something that I think is unnecessary for us. And it's my understanding that if there is spending from these accounts, it does, as Member Hollins suggested, need to be approved by the School Committee. So in theory, we are reviewing this and on top of this. And there was some discussion at the Subcommittee level as to whether or not we would-- And there was some discussion at the subcommittee level as to whether or not we would be wanting to keep this as sort of an exhibit and not necessarily a policy, but instead be an information document. That's the one sort of thread that has been voiced throughout all of these years that we've reviewed this, that it's-- it's-- can be a really valuable educational document for new members, current members, reminders to the public about these different accounts and the basic guidelines for those accounts. So, in that way, I do think that it-- it can be helpful to look at this policy because it is all concisely in one location. However, I think that because it's not a firm policy, we shouldn't have it here as a policy. And then, gosh, I had another point and I've lost it now. It might come back to me. I heard Member Karen suggest to, again, bring it back to subcommittee. Member Karen, is that a motion to review again in subcommittee?
Sure. Yes, I will motion that we send DBE policy back to the subcommittee.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my member Johnson. In the interest of moving along, are there any other kind of new comments on this or anything before we vote? I see Steve. Thank you so much, Steve.
Okay.
Uh, but wait till you get up to the mic. Thank you.
I just want to say, um-- When I-- when I look at this policy, it's, um, there's a distinct difference between policy and procedure. A policy is, we encourage all students to go on field trips and teachers to do field trips. That's a policy. When you get into procedure, it's the, um, permission slips will go out two weeks before the field trip. Every kid will have their money in three days before the field trip. And when I look at this, uh, this is clearly procedure in this policy. And everything the mayor's come up with, everything Susan's come up with, are the policies that you're trying to, um, accomplish, but it's getting lost in the numbers and in the procedural detail of this particular piece. So I think it's a great idea to send it back, take a look at it a little more in-depth, to lose the procedural parts and then focus on the policy pieces that you want to accomplish with it.
Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
Um, I see Member Hollins.
Yes, I-- I will try to make a different comment.
[laughing]
For my last comment.
There you go.
If you were going to summarize what the big policy issue is that this particular policy gets at, it's whether or not in the stewardship of a school committee, not the role of the business manager, not the role of superintendent, but the stewardship assigned to a school committee, is that you want to bring your expenditure budget in alignment with your appropriation, or you want to keep the budget you created and spend out any stabilization funds you have in a year. That's kind of the heart of the discussion. And my opinion is, the sensible stewardship policy is to talk about how you can bring your expenditure in alignment with your appropriation and always have stabilization funds. I think that's what gets at the heart of it. The reason maybe other districts don't have this policy is because of what happened in Greenfield that generated the policy. What I remember is there was only one negative vote against this policy when it was voted. I-- thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to further consider policy DBE at the subcommittee level. All those in favor?
Aye.
And, okay, and I am opposed. So, everyone said yes but me. Okay, thank you. So we will move on to DVG. Member Karen?
All right, on that. So, um, we checked our, uh, policy on that one that's ours. We did change up DBJ. We added a little bit of language, um, clarifying the-- the policy for transfers between major cost centers. It's just pretty straightforward if you read it. Uh, we've-- it says, "All requests for transfers between the major cost centers must be submitted to the school committee for approval. Transfers between mine and Adam's to the major cost center must be reported to the school committee as part of the Director of Business and Finance's quarterly report." And, uh, and then that is the only difference. Everything else is ours. Uh, DG? Is there a question?
Uh, Member Hollins.
All right, go.
I-- I have no problem with the change. I would just like us to have policies that don't have to keep coming up because they are ambiguous and there-- we don't have a definition for major cost center. If you said cost center, it would be clear. Major cost center, now we have to, what's major, what's minor, what's-- and I don't care for that phrase because it's just leads to dispute.
Okay. Are you suggesting further review of that, Member Hollins?
I'm suggesting we strike the word major.
Okay. Is there a second for consideration at subcommittee to strike the word major?
Second.
All right. Any comments, questions? I saw a member--
I have one.
Um, member Action First and then you.
Okay.
Um, my concern is then we're re-- we're reviewing all requests for transfers between all of the cost centers. I don't want to-- I'm sorry, I don't want to mess around with little stuff. And that doesn't sound eloquent, but that's what I'm getting at.
Cool. And Member Karen? Did you have a comment about that?
Um, so, we changed the language, if you read this, from the MASC's policy because of-- the DESI defines their cost centers with a very specific number, um, I believe a four-digit accounting and double zero, hard to read. So, I guess we can kick it back, but it is defined by DESI. Major is a definition they have, so it might behoove us to add that definition to this, but I agree with Susan-- Susan Action, we should not be reviewing every transfer. That's over quite, we don't need to be doing.
Steve is suggesting DESI cost centers. And then I see Mayor Martin's hand.
Yeah. This actually is a best practice, a financial policy best practice, and the idea is that there is intra-departmental transfers are done internally within the business manager and superintendent and then reported to the school committee. Interdepartmental, which you go from, and the language that this is using is, uh, cost centers. If you're going from one cost center to another, then that needs school committee approval. So I'm-- I'm fine with this, but certainly defining what a cost center is is helpful.
Thank you. And Steve is here just to quickly comment.
Yeah, it, uh, um, DESI does major cost centers. Another way of putting it would be DESI cost centers. That's the 1,000, the 2,000, 3,000, the 4,000, things like that.
Thank you. Steve suggested, um, using DESI cost centers as the language. Anyone other than Member Hollins have any comments before we kick it back to her? Okay. And we do have a motion on the table to consider removing the word major, right, and reviewing that sentence. Member Hans, go ahead.
I don't agree with the DESI cost center because we don't develop our budget that way, and we have to have a working knowledge of our budget. However our budget is developed, we have cost centers. And if you want to take-- DESI would allow you to take 100, if you use that, 150,000 from teachers over here and put it in teachers over here, it has nothing to do with how we developed our budget for high school. So we should stick to the budget we're working with. We have this school and that school and whatever, special ed administration. And you have quite-- quite a bit of play within those cost centers to make changes, but doing it with DESI would mean we would never understand what's happening with cost centers because it's a whole different way of organizing unless we reorganize our whole budget that way. So I stick with the motion to just, you could put school district budget cost centers. There aren't that many small ones.
Yes, Member Johnson.
I think a kind of a trend that I'm hearing or a framework that-- that my brain is organizing this information around is essentially like, to what degree do-- do we use policy to prescribe the way we go about doing our work as a school committee and-- and that we ask the administration to do things. And I think the-- the point of policy is essentially to create a broad enough, uh, I guess a clear enough kind of framework or skeleton that then the school committee has the tools that it needs to flesh things out the way they wish. And so I think at some point, I think we may want to resist the temptation to get too prescriptive in these and just see whether there's the room for us to do what we need to do and ask the questions we need to ask. And I think with both this item and the previous item, I'm seeing that there actually is enough there that we could, you know, make requests or set procedures that would be separate from these policy documents. So I guess that's what I urge people to consider is leaving these policy documents in a broad enough framework that it gives future school committees the framework, the flexibility they need to do the work the way-- the way they want to do it.
Thank you, Member Johnson. So we do have a motion on the table to, um, review the third paragraph and potentially remove the word major from cost centers. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
I'm opposed. There are three noes and four yasses, so we will take that into consideration at the subcommittee. Um, one second.
It was my understanding that we were voting to have the subcommittee consider removing the word major, modifying that sentence. Is that--
This is a first reading, so, yeah, that was the motion that was made, was to kick it back to the policies committee.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Member Karen, take it away.
All right, we are, if I didn't accidentally skip any, on funding proposals and applications. We checked our policy, but just changed a little bit of the language. Um, it's, uh, in considering proposals and grants, the school committee encourages the administration to be mindful, but not limited to the following. And we added sustainability to the bottom, um, mostly just because, yes, sustainability is incredibly important, but the needs, goals and interests of the school system are our first and foremost goal. That is why we changed that. Um, we went to DGA. We just added the superintendent or designee will also sign payroll warrant. Otherwise, we kept ours. Um, DH, we eliminated one sentence.
You have your hand up. Okay, Member Hollins has her hand up.
The issue--
All right.
On payroll warrants, if nobody signed a payroll warrant, they still have to be put through because you have to pay people. It's a law. So, do you-- if a superintendent wasn't available to sign the payroll warrant, it would still go through and people would be paid. Is there anybody else in the district who should be signing a payroll warrant other than the superintendent? That's my question.
Um, and I believe a thought process behind this was if the superintendent was away or on leave or something, there would be someone that would be appointed as the designee. And so that was, that's my recollection of the thought process on that. It was just sort of an extension of that. Yes, Mayor Martin?
Um, the superintendent or designee, so the superintendent may choose a designee, but it wouldn't abrogate the superintendent for the responsibilities of signing and guaranteeing the payroll.
That's correct. That's my understanding that the superintendent is ultimately responsible.
Guaranteeing the payroll is not guaranteeing a paycheck. It's guaranteeing that the submissions for hours for each employee are accurate.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, suggestions, motions, anything related to DGA? Okay, seeing none. Member Karen, if you could continue, uh, DH, I believe.
Yeah. So DH, bonded employees and officers, we checked our policy, eliminating the last sentence. The city retrieves and pays for blanket bonds. Any position within the school department that is assigned responsibility of receiving and dispensing school funds will be covered by the city bond. Um, I also want to very look at exactly why we said that before. Um, superintendent is responsible with school committee and district management. That was just why we changed, eliminated that last sentence.
And I see Mayor Martin's--
Was it DH we're on?
DH, yep.
Um, so I-- I still believe each individual has to be covered by the bond. It doesn't automatically go to an umbrella city bond.
I didn't hear that.
Am I misunderstanding the policy?
Can you say that again?
It says, "The city procures and pays for a blanket bond. Any position within the school department that is assigned the responsibility of receiving and dispensing school funds will be covered by the city bond." So it's a town, school department policy commanding the town to cover its employees under the city bond. So that would be one error, I would think. Number two, each individual who receives money has to be bonded individually, whether it's a city bond, an umbrella bond, or the school department's bond. So Steve would know exactly how he gets bonded.
Yeah. Generally, we, well, we have to go through the city because the insurance is through the city. And then there's, from what I understand, a general bond with the city, but we have to provide the specific information for that particular person in order for them to be covered under that bond.
Right. And then the comp-- uh, the city pays for the, everyone in the school department that has a bond.
Exactly.
Um, I see Member Hollins.
What I understand about this is that every few years, the city-- what I understand about the sentence that Spings has a strikeout, is that every few years, the city says to the school department, "Who's handling money? We have to put their name on our bond." And they were having trouble getting the information. But I don't, I think that's what happens, is the city writes to the school department and says, "Tell us who's handling money. We need to put it in." So this, if I'm right, and that's what I recollect, that's why the sentence was here just saying, "Look, if the city asks who's handling money, please make sure they get the information because it was a problem." That's my comment. Thank you.
Um, I know. I hope your kids are having fun, Member Karen. It sounds like they are.
Um, I'm sorry you couldn't hear them. They're outside in the pool and I'm in the house.
Nice. Um, okay, I am very comfortable with the strikeout here. We did have conversation at the subcommittee level about, um, the process for this and how it all works, and I'm content with how it is here. Member Karen, did you want to make any commentary about DH? And then I think I saw a hand over here.
I was just, did you clarify?
I was just going to say that--
Hold on.
We're getting back--
No, not you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Katie.
Um, we're getting back to that procedure and not policy. Again, our policy should be policies, not procedures. I'm comfortable leaving it out. If the super-- if the principal are not giving the information to the town, that can be brought to the school committee and handled that way. I don't think we need to have it in our policy manual.
Okay. And Member Hollins, did you want to make a comment?
I was just wondering if anyone had clarified how this really works. Do we have to give notice of specific people or are people automatically clarified or automatically covered?
We have to give notice of specific people. Yeah.
Steve's response is that we have to give notice to the city, um, specific people that are to be covered. Any more on this? Okay. Moving on, Member Karen.
All right, we are on DI. We opted to go with MASC language here. Um, it's the accounting system chosen by the-- system chosen by the school administration is the school administration's choice. It would be amazing if it lined up perfectly with the town, but that is not always in the best interest of the school department, and we wanted to leave that option in there. We did opt to receive periodic financial statements quarterly as the periodic or MASC stated. Most are questions. I don't have anything else to say.
Okay.
Again...
I see Mayor Martin.
Just one question. The last couple of words, determined necessary by either the committee or the administration will be presented. As found desirable? I don't know if that's necessary. Like, the superintendent and the business manager work for the school committee, so if the school committee is going to request some financial documents, it's not as found desirable, it's, please present. So I would move that we delete as found desirable.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm sorry.
To consider deleting as found desirable.
Oh, to consider deleting it, to have the committee considered. Okay.
Fine, I'll move to have the committee consider deleting it.
And second by Member Ward, any further discussion? I see Member Hollins.
My question is broadly, my comment is broadly a concern about stewardship on school district finances. We're eliminating advisement and any guideline about the use of revolving funds, which is several million dollars. We're eliminating the school committee reviewing transfers between cost centers, and now we're reviewing all financial reports except for quarterly reports. The policy we're getting rid of says no less than quarterly reports. You've removed your finance subcommittee. I'm just worried about the whole thing. So I don't agree with only quarterly financial statements. It should be quarterly or whenever requested because now you're limiting how much information you've given. It makes me uncomfortable that we've gotten rid of so much oversight for budget.
Member Ekstrom?
I understand your concern. I mean, that absolutely makes sense. On the other hand, I feel like as a committee, we spend a lot of time micromanaging the budget. And I...
Micromanaging?
Looking at this little tiny thing over here and this little tiny thing over here. And that isn't, I don't think it's healthy for us to be solely focused on that. I mean, you know, such other financial statements as may be determined necessary. My own curiosity, I want to know all about how the transportation accounts go because we've just purchased these vans, and I'm really interested in knowing about that. That's just my own little thing that's been sitting in my head. On the other hand, I don't need to see how every dollar is being spent and where it's going back and forth every single month. And so I don't feel like quarterly is a, is an unexpected amount of time when, and I understand that the budget is, obviously, we're all driven by that and all of those things, but seeing every little minutia gets us too far into the weeds and we lose sight of the larger goal of what we have.
Thank you, Member Ekstrom. I see Mayor Martin.
I just want to remind all of us that we are the, we are the ones oversight for the budget. There is no one else. In addition to the allowing for financial reports, I'd like the committee to also consider that we state in the policy that the accounting software system is the same as the city and not delete it as proposed in this policy. So even though the conform with state requirements is a fine phrase, it doesn't help with coordinating and consolidating annual reports for the city of Greenfield if we have different systems. So having the same system is really the best financial practice that can be done.
And so is it that the town or the city reviews everything monthly?
Unless I'm hearing what you're...
The city...
But the city council, like, no, they don't.
City financial accounting reports to the city council quarterly.
Quarterly.
And all departments have access to their, the reports, their department reports.
So there was a motion on the table to delete, to consider deleting the words presented as found desirable. What I'm hearing is a couple other points. So I think that we should actually kind of be a little bit more general of this and request that the subcommittee take a look at DI as a whole, and we can review the points that were brought up. One of them is Mayor Martin's considering the use of the same system, accounting software. And then there was reviewing the presented as found desirable, and then reviewing the frequency of reports quarterly versus any other. Does, I'm seeing some... And send it to the subcommittee again.
Yes, some of the items that were, have strikeout maybe leave in. Like, you have a sentence in there that we, unless we have a different decision, we do coordinate using the same budget system.
Okay, so I think we all have an understanding of what we're suggesting here, which is to have the subcommittee look over DI. We'll take a look at the points that were mentioned. I do want to just say that a couple of the things, you know, presented as found desirable does actually allow some flexibility for us to request additional documents or reports. But in the interest of time and moving this conversation along, I will yield any further comments related to DI. I saw your hand just now. Did you want to make a comment before we...
It was just a process question, so I guess you're offering an amendment to Mayor Martin's motion?
Yeah, thank you, Member Johnson. I'm offering, or perhaps it's easier to just...
Refer to committee.
Yeah, refer the whole policy to committee and to take into consideration the points that were brought up today.
Just one point of clarification?
Yes.
As we go through these policies, what impact will these policies have on what we've already voted on in the past? For example, our fiscal accounting reporting, the school committee has already voted on certain reports to be received from the business manager at different times during a quarter. So if we vote this new policy, will we then erase all our previous discussions?
So my understanding is not necessarily because of that last sentence, because it says any other financial statements as may be determined necessary by either the committee or administration can be presented to us. So I think that that's a good point, and we can definitely review that and make sure everybody is on the same page and with the same understanding. My recollection of the deliberation on this was really to ensure that we had quarterly statements as, as a sort of like, this is our bare bone structure. As you can see, we struck out periodic, to be a little more specific.
Good, thank you. Can I call the question, please?
Okay. So just to be clear, there was a motion, and that motion has been removed, and there's a new motion to fully review DI at the subcommittee level.
Yes.
Does that make sense to you, Kim? There was an initial motion that was specific to just the language of presented as found desirable.
I have to refer the entire thing to...
Second, okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
Aye.
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 Katie, are you cool to review DI at subcommittee?
She's in the pool.
Katie's in the pool.
Is she on vacation?
Oh, hold on. Here I am, sorry. I muted you. You couldn't hear them screaming anymore. I said, yes, let's do it.
Okay, that is unanimous, Susan Farber. And are you clear on what we just did? Bill made the motion, and then Glenn seconded. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we are moving on, Member Karen, to DIE.
So we, DIE. All right. Oh, no. Yeah, we're not on DIE. Yeah, there it is. DIE. We opted to use their language. Any audit of the school department's account should be conducted annually. In addition, the committee may request a private audit of the school district's account as a discretion. The committee will consider recommendations made by the auditor for maintaining an efficient system for reporting and tracking the school department's assets. It really boils down to, our job is for school committees' purview, not cities' purview. Because the concerns of the school committee members always should go first with the district, not municipal officials. That practice is for the school committee to directly receive the entire report of the auditor, not only the management, though, and to meet with auditors directly whenever possible. Looking forward, again, we have opted to go with DJ, the MASC model policy. And our reasoning really was because purchasing software, PO management, and purchasing management is for internal business office procedure. This is not under the purview of the school committee. We just really cleaned up the policy to be clear of what our job was and not starting to get into procedure or overstepping. DGA, we, MASC and Greenfield were exactly the same. So that was an easy one. DGJ, capital improvement planning, we just changed a little bit of the language. If you read through there, let's see. The committee commits to working collaboratively with the city for capital improvement and expenditure planning according to the city's capital improvement planning schedule. We eliminated the first sentence because that had not been what had been happening in tax practice. I think it was a three-year. The school committee will advocate for its capital improvement. What is left in that last of the paragraphs, I should say.
So I see Member Ekstrom, Katie.
Yes.
So I have a question. I'm looking at purchasing, which is policy DJ, and we are also looking at revolving accounts. Do those two go hand in hand?
I'm looking at, also looking at what?
Revolving accounts and purchasing, yeah.
Yeah.
You're what, what a...
Well, I, well, it's so if we make changes to revolving accounts, is it that we'll have to make changes to purchasing as well, I guess is where I'm going with this.
Yeah, anything we buy with funds from the school, the purchasing goes forward to it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so back to the capital improvement. Was there another hand on that? No, okay. No?
So we're at DGE?
DJE, right?
Yeah, that's what, I keep saying G, but I mean J. That's good. All right, so DJE. We updated, we chose their policy because D is J. The updated policy reflects the Municipal Modernization Act. The district needs its own policy, not only the city's, and the guideline should be in the realm of administrative procedure. So that was why we opted for theirs. I'm trying to remember if she told us when the update to the modernization act came, but I can't remember. I have my head. DJG is ours and the same. DK, we opted for ours with just a couple of little changes, striking in the fifth paragraph in the business office prior school committee meetings. That was not exactly happening. And as applicable from the last paragraph.
Okay.
With DKC, we are so close to the end of D, guys. We opted to keep their policy. It was a little clearer and the original policy stepped into both procedural and contractual realms beyond the purview of policy, which was a repeating theme. Further, the committee approves the rate at which employees are reimbursed in a district. So that was sort of the thinking there.
I see...
And that is the end of policy D.
I see a hand on DKC, Member Hollins.
Perfect.
What I'm concerned about is that, is the, what seems to me is the lack of reference to why the prior school committee changed these policies. You know, there are accurate records kept of everything. And for example, on expense reimbursements, there was a confusion on who approves the superintendent's out-of-state travel. And the basic, I mean, we didn't vote that we had to align with the MASC policy, and there's a lot, this is another one, where there were like seven meetings discussing this. And the prior school committee wanted it in there that if any superintendent wants to go on out-of-state overnight travel, that person doesn't approve their own stuff. So now that's removed, and I don't understand why some of the things that were previously thought to be really important have to be removed in the name of aligning with someone else's thinking when so much thinking went into these.
I just want to clarify that we, as a subcommittee, and I think as a full committee, did not go into the partnership with the MASC to review our policy manual with the intention of aligning entirely with the MASC policies. So I don't think that the statement that I just heard is exactly accurate because it wasn't, that isn't like the baseline intention here.
There's some discussion that everything, everything that's coming up is just not aligned with their policy. We're choosing theirs over ours. I'm just wondering, so much thought went into some of the items that are here while they're being moved.
Thank you. So, and then the other thing that I also just want to kind of remind us of is sometimes even though we put in a ton of effort on something, it is okay to actually change course. So simply because something saw 15 agenda postings and 11 meetings doesn't necessarily mean that we need to stick with that outcome. That's just my position on it, on those two items. Are there any other comments or, yes, Member Karen?
The reason that specific paragraph was taken out is that a lot of that language is covered in individual contracts and is not appropriate for a policy. So a contract cannot be, can't have a contract that says one thing and you're like, well, your policy doesn't say that. The contract wins the language war. So I understand the concern, but we have covered that in our contract about all of these things. So we really need to be careful about our line.
Okay, any other questions, comments, motions, anything on DKC? Okay, not seeing any. So congratulations, everyone. Pat yourselves on the back. We did a thing. Called a first reading of Policy Section D. I'm really proud of us. It is now 8:24. So my time estimate for Section D, it was off considerably. I would like to ask, Member Karen, do you have a recommendation, do you think that we should continue on with a first reading of Section B, or do you think that it's in the best interest of the committee to move to the second reading of Section A? And then just as a reminder, technically, we have all agreed that we want to adjourn at 10:00 PM as sort of a standing rule for us, so that's why I'm bringing this up. And I'm simply asking, Member Karen... And I'm simply asking, Member Karen, as chair of the policy subcommittee, her opinion first because she's chair of the policy subcommittee. What do you think we should do, Katie?
Um, I, I feel like we should prioritize the second reading.
Okay. Do you want to say, just put that forward as a motion to table section B and move forward with section A second reading?
Yes.
Okay, so is there a second? I saw Mayor Martin say kind of agree.
Yes.
Okay, so Mayor Martin is a second to table section B and move on to section A section, second reading. Okay, any comments, questions, anything like that about the motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that is unanimous. So we are going to move on to section A, second reading. Member Ekstrom's asking for a two minute break to use the restroom. So let's just take three minutes, take a three minute break.
Motion is to accept section A as presented and amended.
Would you like to speak to your motion, Mayor Martin?
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Green.
Were we to include in the motions the names of people that were designated, or is that to follow when the person is designated? So we have under, say the, where is it? Under the school district wellness program, there's a, the school committee designates the following individual as wellness program coordinator. We may have done that already, but is that something in the policy that we would have as a specific name or do we just wait till that happens and comes before the committee?
Which page are you on? Or which policy?
It's school district wellness program, file ADF, page one of three, and doesn't say the page.
Thank you. That's a good question. I think it may be a simple oversight. Thank you for pointing that out. Thank you. Member Karen, do you have any recollection or notes on ADF and whether or not the subcommittee put forward a recommendation for who, the title of the person in the wellness committee section, that would be paragraph two? Do you see how there's a blank line and it says title? We lost her. Are you the?
Ununited, ununited. Okay, um, we did not have a name. See, I don't, it's too long to. I don't, we hadn't named someone and that was something we did need to do, I guess, but the question is, do we want to include a name in our policy and then have to change our policy every time someone moves on from that position?
And I think what is suggested in the policy is to simply include a title. So for example, if we were assigning that to like the director of people's services or something like that, then that would be the assignment.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be one specific person, but it looks like we.
It feels like we can accept the policy and then put the name in after, I mean, but.
Mayor Martin is.
President.
Is agreeing. Okay, and I see, Member Holland's?
We, we went through all the budget policies and talked about we couldn't have one prescriptive item in the policy because that's prescriptive. And then we have a background check policy, which is six pages of prescriptive detail. We're going to charge $55, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. We have a sexual harassment policy, which is full of prescriptive information, even who's the superintendent. And the minute any of those details changes, the minute the state law goes from $55 to $60, the policies are out of compliance. What I don't understand is their inconsistency. Why don't we have a simple sexual harassment policy that says, the school committee of Greenfield is committed to the prevention of sexual harassment, will abide by all state laws, and then take all of this detail, make it a regulation, which is where the prescription should be? And why don't we have a policy that just says, Greenfield is concerned, commits to the background checks so that we have safe schools in accordance with state law? And that's the policy, quote the law, and then everything that's here, all these six pages of prescriptive detail, which we've just said, we can't even put one word in our financial policies, just make this ADDA-r a regulation. And that doesn't have to be voted by the school committee if it changes. So I don't get why in this section, we have all these prescriptive policies, which are really regs, as has been pointed out. And that's my thought, we're not consistent. So I, I'd like to see all this fabulous detail on background checks be dash R and a two sentence statement about our commitment to background steps. And all of the detail on sexual harassment, which is great, be ACAB-r and a very simple statement about our commitment to not have sexual harassment in our school system.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions?
I can comment on that.
Are you raising, wait, are you, okay, Katie wants to comment on that and then I think you're raising your hand, is that? Okay. Okay, so go ahead, Member Karen, and then Member Ward.
Sorry, Member Ward. The, I believe, I'm going to reiterate what I heard to be sure. Member Holland thinks that the policy ADDA is more regulation than policy and wishes we would move some of that information to ADDR. I just want to point out that this policy language was developed by attorneys specifically focused in an area to develop policies for public school districts in response to legislation requiring background checks, AKA fingerprinting. This policy was created based on background checks law enacted in May 2014. So I understand what you're saying, but because we've made this point multiple times, I can understand where you're coming from. But this was very clearly told to us that this was specifically developed to make sure all of our bases were covered under the law, under the law.
Member Ward and then Mayor Martin.
Call for a vote.
Okay.
Call the question.
Second.
Okay, so we are voting on whether or not we want to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
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 I have a note because I was curious about Mayor Martin. But I think that that, that motion passes to call the question. I'm seeing Susan Farber.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so there was a motion on the table to accept policy, the policy A as presented.
And amended.
And amended. And then Member Ward called the question, we voted on that. It passed by a vote of Member Ward, Member Johnson, Member Karen, and Member Ekstrom. So four yeses. And then now we are voting on the motion, which is to accept policy A as presented and amended. Okay.
Should we find out who's abstaining and who's saying no on the motion to call the question?
I don't think that technically we have to, but we can do that. Who is opposed to calling the question? I was opposed, there were three opposed to calling the question for the record. Thank you, Member Johnson. So now we are voting on the motion, which is to accept section A as presented and amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Member Holland's is opposed.
No, I just don't understand.
Okay, so you're a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is unanimous. Congratulations, everyone. We got through section A.
Permission to speak with Member Karen.
Okay. Sure, here, do you want my phone?
Well, I did find the page that I had missed with a note, Member Karen, and it has to do with marijuana. We have our tobacco products on school premises prohibited, but we don't have any mention of marijuana or other types of newly legalized medication or drugs. Do you find it addressed in other policies?
Yeah, so I did.
Will you put her up to the mic?
DPH has classified marijuana as a tobacco product, however, since marijuana is still illegal at the federal level, any schools that use federal funds have to have federal laws, so it's not really covered. You could add it to the policy if you wanted to. But legally, we have met all of the things we needed to.
No, thank you very much. That clearly answers the question.
Okay, so it is now 8:40.
No.
No?
Don't do it.
She says no. Okay, you want to go? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Are you sure? Well, I'm fine to accept responsibility for a motion to adjourn. Mayor Martin is a second. Any deliberation? Okay, all those in favor of, oh, I'm sorry, Susan Holmes? Can you, can you please use your mic?
I, I just think that it's so hard to get the policies reviewed. There's been a lot of work done. The controversy is on budget. We've done budget, we've done this. This is first reading. This one is easy because the changes are highlighted. Some of the other ones, it wasn't so clear. I think you could get through this in 30 minutes, it'll never come up again and we should do it.
Okay, so there's motion to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourned? Aye.
Aye.
Susan is opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Thanks a lot. Have a great day.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solistore of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122 or visit them online at solistoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
You're watching GCTV, Community Access Table Channel 15 in Greenfield, Massachusetts.